Good evening. Welcome to the July 10th Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. We will call this meeting to order. And first on the agenda, if you'll please join me in rising for the flag of allegiance. Thank you. And now if you'll join us for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First up on the agenda is the agenda approval. No motion?
Second?
Any discussion? If there's a favor, please take no saying aye.
Aye.
Any appeals? Okay, this brings us to the first time that's set aside this evening for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board to address the board on any topic of their choice. I think we have some folks with us tonight that want to speak regarding the brunch bill that's on our agenda. This would be the appropriate time, is during public comment. We start with a list. If you sign up on the list, we'll call from the list first. If you didn't sign up, no worries. Then, once we complete the list, we'll call from the floor. You just raise your hand if you would like to speak. We do ask if you're speaking as an individual that you try to limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you would limit your comments to five minutes, that way we can move through in a timely fashion and still hear from everyone. When you do approach the podium, if you would just identify yourself by name and address, please. So we have that in our public comment record. So with that, we'll start and welcome Daniel Lewis, you're first on our list. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Daniel Lewis, 122 Runhope Drive, KDH. I'm a restaurant owner and president of the Outer Banks Restaurant Association, which represents over 100 businesses that employ countless residents, both year-round and seasonal. Our group voted unanimously in March to petition our legislature for passage of what is now known as the Brunch Bill, which changes the Sunday alcohol restriction from 12 noon to 10 a.m. Upon its signing into law on June 30th, North Carolina joins 47 other states that have removed or reduced Sunday alcohol restrictions. Based on these examples in other states, the North Carolina Restaurant and Lodging Association estimates that the average restaurant could see an increase in revenue of $25,000 per year. And of course, the employees who serve our guests would see much of that economic benefit, as well as adding to the local and state tax revenues. The Brunch Bill is not only popular with restaurants and employees, but also with our guests, the lifeblood of our tourism economy, many of whom come from states that have already removed these restrictions and simply don't understand North Carolina holding on to outdated laws that do nothing but harm our economy. The bill has been pretty popular on Drone Street as well, passing in the NC House 73 to 40, and the Senate 37 to 9. Our own Representative Boswell also realized the significant economic benefit to our area in particular, perhaps the most significant in the state, and has been astonished supporter. Pursuit to the statute is now up to localities to adopt the ordinance. Nowhere in the Outer Banks will this likely have a greater positive impact, more businesses and citizens than in Kill Devil Hills. And now that the town council has added this onto tonight's agenda in advance to allow for public comment, we are hoping that tonight you will vote to adopt the Brunch Bill so that we can start realizing the economic benefits while they are most significant before the peak season ends. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks. Next, we have Richard Bruce. And Richard, is this really, you also are scheduled for your specific presentation on the Beach Food Pantry as an agenda item?
Mm-hmm.
So if you want to speak at public comment on something separate, otherwise, we'll have your agenda item in just a couple of minutes.
Okay. Should I, is this, should I speak about the pantry now, or was this about?
Just a couple of minutes. I'll call you up under Introductions and Presentations.
Okay.
Is that cool?
Yeah, I'll sit back down.
Okay, yeah.[282.27][282.27](laughter) Sorry.
That's all right.
Yes, because you're going to have a PowerPoint, and we'll do that in just a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
Okay. Phil Wayland?
Phil Wayland. I live at 704 Teakwood Lane in Kill Devil Hills. I'll be pretty brief. I think Dan did a great job of summarizing all the benefits of the Brunch Bill. I'm a resident here, as well as a business owner that would be impacted by this for retail sales. Like Dan said, we've got lots of visitors that come and tend to kind of shake their heads at us based on the timing on Sundays and some of these sort of antiquated laws. So I would ask that the council vote in favor of the Brunch Bill today to help both our economy, as well as kind of our standing in the eyes of our visitors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, next, Pauline Set White and Michael Payne. Welcome.
Hello. Hi, Michael Payne. This is Pauline White. We run Good All Go Rentals Beach Umbrella Service, and we're having an issue with keeping our umbrellas stored on the beach. And what we're going to do is just give you a little brief summary of just why we're beneficial to the town and why we need this stored on the beach, and let you know how we're still, we think we're still in all the laws of the town. And I'd like to also just pass around some pictures, having to be out on the beach on Saturday night, while how visual on one of the reasons why our services beneficial to the town. It helps, I guess, cushion some liability for the other services or for the towns, whatever liability the town may have with the other services, the way they handle their business. And Pauline is going to go through the details of how the business operates. She's the head supervisor there, which we got about 12 people under her that have run it in the field. And so we've really got a big group of people keeping an eye on the safety of everything and the equipment. And can I show these to you all? And she's going to go ahead and start talking and giving you the details of how the business operates.
So we live in Kitty Hawk, but we, our umbrella and chair services all run in Kill Devil Hills. We have contracts signed with certain hotels in Kill Devil Hills. We usually rent through the hotel. My signage is inside of the hotels. People will call me and pre-book. My concern is, we store our, we like to store our equipment back, we put it back as far to the east of the dune as possible, right there. We make it aesthetically pleasing to the eye where we buy the tarps that are sand-colored so not to, you know, have an eyesore out there. Everybody who's employed with me goes through extensive training on how to put an umbrella in properly, what to watch for to make sure that umbrella does not blow out. And to keep my equipment on the west side of the dunes and to have to go over to the west side of the dune by the hotel each and every time to pull a rental takes the eyes off the umbrella. And we all know, living here at the beach, the weather can change in a heartbeat, and those umbrellas can be dangerous when they blow out. I know there's other services out there that will rent to tourists. They drop them off, but then a tourist is in charge of that umbrella and those chairs for the day. Those tourists have no idea. I'm sure they didn't look at what wind speeds and what wind directions were happening for the day. I'm sure they're not checking the weather. I'm out there seven days a week. I have apps on my phone that alert me to any weather that's coming on, any lightning strikes, anything that winds, that shift, that change. All my employees, we communicate through a group text, so everybody knows what's going on from minute to minute. My concern is safety. Our company has a $2 million liability policy, so we take, we take the liability. I train my kids to keep an eye. They know when that bar starts moving, that umbrella is working itself loose. On high wind days, they must get up every 10 to 15 minutes and check each and every umbrella that they have to make sure it doesn't need to be repositioned. We don't allow a customer to handle our equipment whatsoever. There are no customers allowed to put that, you know, pull it out and change position. Our trained employees do that. We do not, I know there's laws about ordinances about soliciting on the beach. We do not solicit on the beach. None of my umbrellas have my logo, name, phone number. They have a number on it. We do not approach anybody and ask, "Do you want to rent from us?" They approach us. We've been told that the exchange of money has to happen off of town premises, onto the hotel premises. We try to do that, but we do get some reluctant from the tourists when we ask them to walk over the dune in order to make this transaction. So sometimes, I'm not going to lie, the transaction does happen on the beach, and I, all my employees are trained, don't make it, you know, obvious, be down low about it. I try to have all rentals come through my company via phone call, you know, because my signage is in each hotel that we service. What I'm asking for today is to be allowed temporarily from May to September to store my equipment on the beach. We take, but we never leave our equipment out overnight. I have pictures of people who, I'm not going to name names, rent from other companies, and then they're in charge of the equipment. They leave it out all night. We never leave our equipment out overnight. It is packed up at 5:00 when we close securely, and so I'm asking if they would let us from May to September store our equipment on the beach. My attendant be allowed to be on the beach to watch that equipment? And that's about all I have.
And then, this is awesome. We don't want to have to get a big, burly construction worker to have to carry it over these dunes. We want a young kid with a big smile on his face representing our town, that a lot of our banks.
We employ a lot of, you know, high school kids.
This is our industry here. This is our biggest industry in this town.
Not to mention there's some elderly people that cannot carry a chair and umbrella and get it, and they just cannot do it.
Yeah.
And they are so thankful that we're out there, you know, it's done for them. We put it in, we watch it for them, and we break it down for them.
And these umbrellas are medicinal for a lot of elderly people. And even for myself, I have good things.
They're heavy. They're heavy. I carry them all day.
I mean, it's nice to have some shade out there, especially this, the dog days of summer we're having right now.
And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you, Phil.
We'll continue on with public comment, and then we address responses during response to public comment. Next, signed up Matt Walker. Matt, welcome, Matt.
Hello. Matt Walker, 439 West Walker Street. Here first by myself, or perhaps myself, and if we in support of the Brunch Bill. My liver's not, for the rest of me, totally in favor. And then, otherwise, I'm a half a Surf Rider, just wanted to give you a quick update on some recent issues. I know you guys have been following, and a big ally, supporter of ours in keeping the plastic bag van from being repealed. There's been some sort of fuzzy information going around that somehow that happened. It has, it's definitely still in play, so if you go to the Outer Banks Surf Rider Facebook page, there's a list of phone numbers you can call. There's a conference on August 3rd, all the conferences, contact is there. Any help you want to be in, sort of putting out a plea on how much we appreciate that bag van, that's super helpful. The other big issue is offshore drilling. Obviously, the seismic testing public comment has been extended to July 21st, so if you go to Don't Drill and See, there's some talking points, and they're really sort of interested in getting any pushback on that. And then, of course, in the last week, the administration opened up the entire, the first round of the actual process to potentially begin lease sales as soon as 2019. That public comment, I can't remember the exact date now, but it was 45 days. So, August 17th, it came to me. So on August, by between now and August 17th, we'll certainly be rallying, but stand by to try to sort of push back and maybe anything you do to spread the word throughout the community that this is back and better than ever would be wonderful. Positive notes, South Carolina's already come out in opposition. Virginia Beach has already come out in opposition, day one. That's a big change from the last time around. I heard Maryland's opposed too, so we're going to start leaning on our own governor to see if maybe we can get sort of a unified opposition going on the front side and see if we can make a difference. And we'll be getting more yard signs shortly this week, so stay tuned for that as well. And I apologize and be rude, I got to believe, but thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to seeing you when this land news plan survey's about, and thank you again.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. That's all from the list. Is there anyone who did not sign up on the list that would like to speak at this public comment time? Seeing no hands, we'll move on then to response to public comment. As far as for the Brunch Bill, we'll get to that in just a few minutes, so we'll have our discussion then, but thank you all for speaking tonight. Then, let's see, about the beach rentals. I know three of us were on the board, it's been, well, it's been four years ago, when Merrick DeBroski came with a similar request for his company. And we did not change the ordinance to allow that at the time. Ever just concern of how do you, which was interesting because one of his comments at the time is that was his business, and that we wouldn't see an increase in request. But that was our concern, is that we may see that in doing so, but we opted not to. We do have new members on the board since that discussion, so, and we have questions certainly we can ask Meredith about the ordinances and whatnot.
I have a copy for discussion, so. I have a copy of how the ordinance would change.
Yeah, we've got, our staff experts.
Okay.
Thank you, though. So, discussion?
Well, you know, I don't really see the issues at the moment, but this is, you know, I wasn't around the last time, so I'm not really familiar with all of what was said then.
And we, since it's just under public comment, and if the board wants to take it as an agenda item, so you can get more information, we can do that as an option in the future, or?
I would suggest that for our next meeting. And meanwhile, we can get information together.
Is that okay with you guys? And if we knew what the meeting was specifically, I can, you know, go look at the minutes.
We can send you the information.
All right.
Okay. So is that the consensus? The board wants to schedule this for our next meeting as an agenda item, and in the meantime, staff will provide information, historical, the ordinance, how things fit.
All right.
Okay. That will work. And Matt had to run out, but I certainly appreciate all that the Surf Rider group is doing with their advocacy efforts. We had a large charge a couple of years ago in opposition to all of these things, and have some really, what I would term, great victories with advocacy, but it is all back before us once again, so all the same effort and advocacy is needed again. Any other comments? Under response to public comment. Okay. We will move on then, under Introductions and Presentations. The first one this evening is Ken Wilson. Ken, welcome, and he's here to provide us an update on our beach nursery project.
Right off the bat, I just wanted to touch base. Our company's got a little bit of a different emblem, different logo. We've been working for the town as coastal planning and engineering of North Carolina since probably 2010, maybe something like that, went through the feasibility studies. But our firm's been acquired a couple of different times through different divestitures and things like that, but the latest iteration of the ownership of the company is a newly-created company called Aptum, so just wanted to bring that up. It shouldn't affect you guys at all. All of your contracts are through our coastal planning and engineering of North Carolina entity, so it's a little bit different for most of our clients in North Carolina, but just, our emails changed a little bit, but other than that, same old familiar face. Just going to go through some construction progress and photos. We'll talk a little bit about the schedule, talk briefly about monitoring and maintenance, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of those items. Here's a map we put together, shows the project limits within Kill Devil Hills, so those green lines got the south boundary and the north boundary. Of course, the north boundary is the town line with Kitty Hawk. South boundary is down there around Prospect Avenue or so. Those blue lines shown are the sublines, so the sand where the, or the pipes where the dredge actually hooks up to and pumps the sand either north or south. And we've put together this little animation here that shows about July 22nd, July 23rd, they started pumping from the Helga Street Station. Took them about five or six days before they were actually into Kitty Hawk. On the south end, they started around the, I think it was around July 29th, and they pumped south. They finished what we call the taper, where it gets a little thin down there near Prospect. They finished that up around July 3rd, I believe, and then they flipped, and they started working north for a few days. They got up around First Street, then they came in with that second subline. They pumped south to tie into the existing fill, and then, over the weekend, they flipped and started moving north. Right now, the fill, the construction site is right in front of the northern section of the Sea Ranch, in front of the Mariner as well, so that's where they are at this point in time. Just the same sort of thing, going north, obviously, they went north from Helga Street into Kill Devil, into Kitty Hawk, and then they had some issues with one of their pipelines so to, so that the dredge wasn't sitting idle, they've actually started pumping a little bit more of the southern part of Kitty Hawk. And then this is a map of the northern portion of Kitty Hawk and southern shores. Got some photos, like that iteration that I just went through. Everything started there around Helga Street on June 22nd, June 23rd. This is the subline coming in, they build that pad up. Takes them a couple of days to create a work surface where they can move all their equipment out onto the beach, and then they start adding pipe on as they go. So this is moving towards Kitty Hawk at the Helga Street. This is two days later. This is another five days later, so they make some pretty quick progress. At this point in time, they're jumping into Kitty Hawk. And then by July 5th, the day after 4th of July, this is, this is a shot that shows how far north they got from that Helga Street. And then another vantage point shows them moving south from White Street to kind of tie into that area. This is the last of the drone shots we have from Friday, showing them try to tie that gap in there. They actually finished that up over the weekend, so right now they're pumping north from White Street. This is kind of what the ground level looks like, that stretch between Tate Way and Helga, completed section of the beach. I just showed this, these are some pipes that are sitting out around Arch Street right now. They're just storing them out on the beach right now until they get that Helga Street pipeline finished up or repaired. We've talked to them a couple of times just to make sure there's plenty of flagging around that, plenty of tape. It's kind of a little kid's playground if they don't keep an eye on it, so every day when we go out there, we, you know, we watch it and, you know, make sure that they're keeping things around it so that nobody's getting into that. Then on the south end, sort of the same sort of thing, starting around Landing, moving south. This is just a few days in. Really didn't take them very long to construct the south end, and that south end taper, I think they were pumping for about four days. At this point in time, July 6th, they've actually flipped, and they're working their way north from that same Landing, Landing Street subline. And then this, by July 7th, they jumped up to a subline that's up around Second Street. And over the weekend, they closed that gap that you can see there in that picture. Down there in the right-hand corner is, like I mentioned, the Sea Ranch. So as of today, the pipe has been flipped around, they're actually working north from the Sea Ranch. It's really hard from the ground view to get a good shot of the dunes, just because there's, you know, all the sand is the same color, there's no transition or anything, but I've got a couple of shots that try to give you a good vantage point of that slope on the front of the dune. It goes from an elevation of 15 feet at the top of the dune down to six feet, which is where the berm is. Over time, that's going to, that'll change a little bit. Right now, if you go out there on a constructed piece of the beach, you've got that flat six-foot section out there, but if you go to unconstructed parts of the beach, you know that, you know, from the time you get down off the dune, it kind of, you know, tapers down at an elevation all the way down to the waterline. And over time, that flat six-foot area will adjust, so at some point, it shouldn't be as big of a drop to go down from that 15 feet to six feet. You'd expect some of that sand to pile up, and some of the sand fencing and the vegetation that'll be installed will help that process out as well. This is right in front of the Mariner yesterday, so you can kind of see that slope there on the front of the dune. That slope is on a one-on-five, a one-on-five slope, but we've been coordinating a lot with Ocean Rescue folks to make sure that they're comfortable being able to get their trucks up there, and I've been pretty impressed, they've had no problems with getting their trucks up there. And then on the backside, the emergency entrance at Second Street and Third Street, we've been making sure that they're comfortable with the slope on the backside of the dune as well. So far, Second Street and Third Street, Dave and his crew are pretty happy with it. This is a shot kind of showing the, in the foreground, or in the background there, up on the top of the picture, you can see how they've kind of sloped the back slope of that dune, sloping down towards the existing dune. In the foreground there, on this side of the, on the south side of those steps, there's a little bit of a hole there. We're talking to the contractors about trying to put some additional fill in, so it's a little bit more of a slope there. But that back slope that you can see at the top, that's what the entrance on the Second Street and on the Third Street look like, the emergency access that the Ocean Rescue are using, so no problem there. That'll do it for the photos. Just a quick update on the schedule. Like I said, construction started at Helga June 22nd. Construction started at Landing down there on the south end on June 29th. As of yesterday, one of the two smaller dredges that have been working down there on the south end has now demobilized, has left the project site. The other dredge, the Padre Island, is scheduled to leave later this week, probably around Thursday. Right now, it left this morning or this afternoon around 1:00 to go get some fuel in Norfolk, should be back working tomorrow, and hopefully we'll get two or three more days out of it. And it'll continue to pump north from that Second Street subline, so, you know, the plan is hopefully they can clear those two big hotels down there. Once those two dredges have demobilized, they'll basically break all the pipe back, back to the subline at Second Street. They'll probably move some of that equipment off of the beach and then store everything else up where they can, put a fence around it, and it will, it will no longer be an active construction area. So all the public will be allowed in there, there'll probably be some signs up around the perimeter, just, you know, don't get onto the equipment, but they'll clean that up as much as possible, and then it'll sit like that until they wake their way down from the south and tie in somewhere in that area. So when will that, when will that tie-in be? Right now, the anticipation, anticipated completion date is somewhere in the middle of that second week of August, the 8th, the 9th, something like that. Obviously, things are constantly in flux, but based on their schedule right now, looks like sometime in the middle of that second week in August. The last slide, as far as monitoring and maintenance. The maintenance plan, which is something that Meredith actually brought up to the attention of all three, four of the towns that we're working on, working with on this project, is that if a storm were to impact the project, part of, part of what needs to happen to make sure that the project is eligible for reimbursement from FEMA if there's damage done during a declared disaster, is that you've got a maintenance plan in place. And so we, Meredith stressed that, you know, with the fact that there's going to be several projects done, and they're done at different times, and the post-construction report may not be done until later in the fall, and the possibility of a storm coming through. She asked if there was something we can do to make sure there was, you know, a documented maintenance plan in place at the time the project's actually finished constructing. So we've got all that in place, we've actually drafted up a plan, it's going through some internal review now, but we anticipate being able to provide staff that draft plan by the time they're finished constructing the project in, you know, that first or second week of August, and then we'll go back and forth with staff to make sure that, you know, if something happened at the end of August or September, God forbid, literally, at least we would have this maintenance plan in place, and, you know, when FEMA comes asking for all the documentation, that, you know, everything's, everything's been laid out clear for them. Like I said, the post-construction maintenance event is scheduled for October 2017. That's all part of the construction contract that we have with the county that you all are cost-sharing in, following up with that. So that will basically be the baseline survey of the starting point for all the, all the subsequent monitoring events. Typically, we'll want to come out Um, typically, we'll wanna come out and do a monitoring event every spring. Uh, we've been talking to staff about getting those contracts in place, but every spring, probably the end of April, early May, we'll come out, we'll do surveys along every thousand-foot profile. Uh, it'll take us a couple of months to, to crunch that data, but, um, looking at that data in a lot of detail shows, you know, what areas are eroding faster, which areas are eroding slower, um, shows you the, the changes in the shoreline, and that's kind of how we keep track of how well the project is performing and, uh, at what point in time, you know, plans need to be made to start thinking about that, that, that maintenance cycle. Um, and then fi- uh, finally, the, the last bullet I put on there is that we'll continue to coordinate with staff on, um, planting and vegetating the dunes. Uh, no, Meredith's been in, 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 in touch with both contractors. Uh, the sand fencing, I imagine, is gonna be starting pretty soon, and then the, the planting will be starting sometime around that second week of August. The same time they'll finish construction, uh, the plan is that the, the vegetation contractor will come in and start working in those areas where the, where the project was first constructed, so they'll kind of follow where the dredges were. Um, the reason for that is that they like to give, uh, the dunes some time to have some good rainfall on it and get some of that salt out of the sand, uh, so that the plants, um, you know, that there, there's not too much salt in that sand[681.78]
Just so that we were moving ready. And then when the time was right, we would be able to expand to further serve our mission. We received help from the Carrying Hands folks. They're a bunch of mostly retired men from Duckie might have Methodist Church. That they go and help seniorize homes. They go help build wheelchair ramps, widen doors. And this was by far their largest project, but they were they were there and they really helped us out. Something else that we're really proud of is before when we served our clients, we would just in the other locations, we would just have just bags pre-made of perishables, non-perishables, and we would just give them to our clients when they came in. And we had no idea if they liked the food that we were giving them. We didn't have no idea if they were allergic to any of the items that we were giving them. And we felt like this would cause waste. And that's something we definitely don't want to do if we're giving food out. So we decided to go with a client choice model. Now, when a client comes to the pantry, they are given guidelines as far as based on the size of their family. And they're able to actually with the help of volunteer, go down the aisles and actually shop. So this eliminates the allergy part of it and of course, the waste part of it. And most importantly, it gives our clients a sense of dignity back, which is super duper important. I mean, if I'm sure anyone can imagine or try to putting yourself in shoes of someone trying or having to visit the pantry, it's it's tough. So giving them this sense of dignity back is is huge. In November of last year, we began our expansion. And again, we had the Carrying Hands folks help us. We expanded the building roughly thirty feet. And you can't really tell from the front. I'll show you some pictures in a little bit. But again, this helped our purchasing power so we could purchase more food and store it and also help with the clients as far as expanding that space to serve them better. And we also received a grant from the Cannon Foundation to to help us with this. And it was completed in April. I've got some pictures I'd like to show you. So that's the front of the building. And of course, you can't really tell from that, but we went east. Everybody familiar with or heard of a gentleman by the name of Shelby Hines? This is their ringleader, the guy on the left. And if it wasn't for him, a lot of this work wouldn't get done. So we're really truly thankful that he's um he's here to help and he's done a great job for us. So we broke ground in November, December. And you can see the pylons and if I'm going too fast, just let me know. By January, we had pretty much, we had the walls and the roof up. The only thing that the Carrying Hands folks didn't do was the roof because most of them are older and they're over I mean, over seventy. So we hired someone to do that. But everyone else, every everything else they did. So we had a really good time doing it. Something really important is you can see the middle picture below. That's the back of the building. And before the food bank, the Almar was delivering a lot of these items. They they felt it was dangerous to turn on approach and highway right into the building. So now they can go around back. They can back right up and we have a loading dock. And we also have a it's covered, so if it's raining, there's there's not really a problem. And then we have the restaurant too. There's our breakthrough day. And that's the finished project. One thing I would like to just, I guess, make everyone aware of is every single community leader, every single business, every single person that that we reached out to for support, there wasn't one person that said no. And that's just a true testament to this community. Because when I first moved here ten years ago or twelve years ago, I wasn't really sure why I wasn't getting invited to the backyard barbecues. And I feel like the main reason is is people that live here, they really want to they want to know if you fit in. They want to know if you're you're going to be just like us as far as willing to lend a helping hand because we do truly take care of our own here. And this was a true testament to that. Just some events that we do throughout the year. We had a nice fundraiser in in May. It was Kentucky Derby themed party. It went really, really well. We do food drives throughout the year. The one at the Lost Colony was very, very successful. We have a summer collaboration with Food For Thought. And that's a program that's it's an after-school program for children on the weekends, especially that they may fall through the gaps and not have that sustenance that they need throughout the weekend. We've teamed up with also with Surf Pediatrics to do so. We have an annual appeal letter that goes out in October that we we send out to nearly every single resident in Dare County. And of course, the marathon. We have two holiday events in the fall, the Thanksgiving and Christmas that we hand out meal bags so that people are able to have a a nice meal for the holidays. And then our special annual fundraiser that we do in December is the Chef's Challenge. And what's really, really cool about it is the chefs have to use at least one canned food item in their dish when they compete for the count of the crown prince or princess of canned goods. I think Sheila was the judge one year.
My youngest son went with me and it was amazing how much he tried. It was great.
And we've actually collected a lot of the recipes that the judge or the chefs have have done over the years. And we're going to come out with a cookbook leaving this song.
It's great.
That's great.
So once again, it's an honor to be in front of you today. And thank you so much for letting me share. And we appreciate your support. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much for your questions. Thank you for coming this evening. Okay. We'll move on next on our agenda is one item under Old Business. This is the proposed land use plan survey questionnaire. Meredith shared this with us at our last meeting. We provided some feedback. You may have noticed some that feedback was incorporated in the version that was given to us last week for review. Anyone has any comments or items or?
So if it's not too late, under where it's asking about the town streets are probably maintained and the ditches are properly maintained. If they choose disagree, is it possible to have a little drop down to where they could, you know, specify where?
I need to know where you are.
Okay, so Town Services, which is on the first page.
Page one.
And it's number two and three. Oh, is yeah, is it possible to add like a dropdown if they say no, that says so where they could specify?
This is not an open question, so Survey Monkey's not going to do that. We would have to take that and rework the entire question for that to be able to happen. Because this is agree or disagree. This is a one through five, like rate your your idea of service. We can put something at the bottom and say, if you disagree with anything, please share your thoughts. Kind of an open text at the bottom.
And maybe a positive spin instead of if you disagree. And I think this was something that Sue had brought up at the conclusion of the last meeting under Public Comment. I think that you incorporate in the end, but maybe.
It's under that was under development.
Okay, let me see.
So the other suggestions on how we can improve.
Suggestions on? Maybe make it specific to that one I'm looking for. Number three.
The other one says suggestions on how we can improve the appearance of the town. We could just add a suggestions on how we can improve on town services and make it a open text.
Right, and for any town services, yeah.
And put it at the conclusion of that question.
That we not.
Okay.
That's how it works.
That's. Other than that, I liked all the questions.
I like the plug.
Yeah.
I think it's exactly what we were asking for.
I have a couple of things. Under on the first page, under Town Services, the width of our beaches is adequate. I would like to recommend we just strike that altogether. Now that we've done beach nourishment, we don't have a way to differentiate which part of the beach may be adequate. Plus, our beach nourishment and the size of our beach is driven by the science and the data that we get. So even if somebody did answer, they don't like the width, it's beach nourishment is going to continue to be based on the science and then the erosion factors and also. I just don't know. I like it being in section number one, wide beaches, because to me, that gets to our people understanding the link between that valuable community asset of having having a good beach, wide beach. But as far as the town services, anyway. So I like my suggest keep it in one, strike it in two. Is this okay with that? Keep it in one, strike it in two. Yeah, keep it there, but strike it in. I say two, sorry, keep it under community attributes, strike it under town services. Do you follow that, Meredith?
Yeah.
Okay. The other and actually another item, this would be under Environment. Question number three or under item number three, one, two, three down. I favor in-town location of land-based support activities for offshore oil and gas exploration and or extraction activities. After this was brought to my attention of not really understanding it, I read it a few times and found myself kind of struggling with understanding it. I had a discussion with Meredith, who gave me some history. This was on the previous survey. And what this question was really going after at the time was if the if it was land-based where there would be an economic value to our benefit, whether that be North Carolina or trickle down to Kilable Hills, trying to draw that link versus everything else that and that still is the case that's being explored offshore with those leases, we may never see a benefit financially for that. So it's trying to discern if people were opposed, were they opposed, or if they were supportive, only if there was a financial link. Correct me if I'm wrong with that interpretation. I don't know though, without that conversation, that I would ever draw that. And unless you hear this conversation and think about that when you're answering this question, I don't think you would necessarily draw that. I don't personally see any value in keeping that section, but that's my personal opinion. That question, no, the section definitely, but that specific item, I think the other three really get to things that are most prevalent.
So strike that.
That would be my recommendation is to strike that.
I'm fine with that. I actually took it as one of the negatives that we had talked about before was potentially no employment opportunities for local citizens. I took that as would you be in favor of it if that was the case? So still kind of along in the economics standpoint.
Well, you were definitely reading into it then, but I think historically it was here to discern.
Good, we're moving on.
Consent is safe. Okay, so we'll strike that. The other thing, and we discussed this a little bit when we reviewed this last time, which led to breaking out, sorry, I'm going to go back under development now, sorry to skip around, but under development. Where through our discussion in question number five, Meredith broke out some of these sub-questions. It's going to be, you know, based on Survey Monkey, click yes, and then it gives you some drop-down options. And we discussed that people may not necessarily know the definitions of, you know, the difference between single-family, multifamily. And through, again, having a discussion this afternoon, would like to recommend that to help with that clarification. That up under Development, before you get to any of the questions, we actually have a definitions session section where we would just define single-family using and consistent with our town. It would be from the zoning ordinance, so.
Yeah, cool. So when you get into the questions, if you can't remember.
It would be right there.
Can you click back or?
That's right, because you're going to be online.
It depends on. We don't know.
Hopefully Survey Monkey, we can make a text box and that'll that'll carry through the four questions that we, five questions that we have here. Are you, I I think that if what I recall, it really applies to one through five.
Correct.
And.
And most specifically is where when we go into five, if you answer five yes, then you get if you answer five no, you're not going to get those sub-questions. You're only going to get those if you answer yes. So it's really those three sub-questions to five. And really, most specifically, it's five, the first one.
Well, then maybe put the maybe put the definition after question five. The only concern I have is the concern we talked, you talked, you expressed to me is when you're talking about residential development, you said that you do not feel like a lot of people think the big houses are residential development. They think it's commercial, so you you really kind of need that definition to follow.
The whole section.
And we can work through Survey Monkey and see if we can't make that box follow at least one through five. And if we can't, we'll get back with you, but that's what we'll try to do.
Right, because you're right, that's true. I forgot me to talk about that, even the very question number one.
Right.
Okay, so let you play around with how best to make that. Are you guys comfortable with having some definitions based on?
Yes.
Sound good, okay, great. That was it.
How many postcards is that going to be to anybody now? We're going to be sending?
Ever.
Property owners, it's it's in the ten thousands, tens of thousands. But we, just to give you a little bit of an update on how that's going to work, we're going to have to develop the entire survey in Survey Monkey and complete it to get the web link to put on the postcard to send out. So there's going to be a a gap in in the the postcard won't go out before we fully got the survey created and up on Survey Monkey. So it will be, there will be a delay, which means we'll have to, we'll leave it open longer than we had anticipated before.
I think that's a good update, but I think that's funny. Gives people certainly plenty of opportunity to respond.
So the results that we talked about at the last meeting, we're going to probably need to push those back for the purposes of the postcard. Because the postcard will have to be created, printed, cut, mail-merged, sent out after the survey's complete. And then you have to want to give time after that happens for those people that may not be on our web server or Facebook or email or or whatever. So that timeline changes a little bit. And I just want, I don't know what that is, but I'll keep you updated.
Okay, I can get it updated the next meeting. Any other questions on? Are we comfortable, do we need a motion to approve? We don't, we're good. We provided consensus.
What we'll do instead of waiting until the next meeting for you to see how Meredith works those definitions in, we'll we'll send that to you by email. And that that'll keep us from losing.
If you need any testers for the survey, let me know.
All right. Thank you. Great. All right, then we'll move on to, thank you, Meredith, to new business, item number one. An appointment to the Board of Adjustment. With the resignation of Bill Donahue from the Board of Adjustment, it leaves his unfilled seat or unfilled term available for appointment. That term will expire May of two thousand and eighteen. Currently, we have two alternates that have expressed a desire to complete the term. That information was provided in our packet. For our discussion or motion?
As it's shown on the screen right here, that Jason Self should be appointed December two thousand and sixteen.
I don't think Meredith got the latest addition.
That's right.
It's not.
Wanted to everybody to know.
You're fine.
Go with the person that's been there the longest or the longest period of time.
So is someone comfortable making a motion for appointment of?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ron Sideman to the zoning board of adjustment.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please stick up saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda, under new business, item number two, is an ordinance to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages before noon on Sundays at licensed premises within the town. So and we obviously, we had a couple of speakers this evening at Public Comment about this, basically with the general statute enacted by the General Assembly on June twenty ninth that now gives local governments the authority to opt ordinance, excuse me, to adopt ordinances to allow alcohol sales to begin at ten rather than previously twelve noon. So our county, our town attorney has reviewed what's in our packet, which is the ordinance amending our town code to allow the sale of beverages beginning at ten AM on Sundays. Open the floor for discussion or comments?
I'm okay with with apologies to Matt Sliver. Yeah, I'm fine with that. No problems.
How if this is, will this go into effect immediately upon adoption? So like by this Sunday, we can be?
It's going to be a lot of people taking Sunday off.
We got half voice that day.
All right, well, I will make a motion that we adopt the amendment to our town code to allow the sale of wine, fortified wine and mixed beverages beginning at ten AM on Sundays.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Please stick up saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, next item is item number three. The Camma Public Beach Access and Waterfront Access Grant Program. This is for Ferris Avenue and Glenmere Avenue. This is pretty exciting, I think. So Meredith, I know a lot of hard work has gone into this. But this is a really great opportunity, I think, in reviewing this for our town. So Debbie or Meredith, you'd like to speak to?
Meredith?
You did the work. Back in April, we did a pre-application for the Camma Coastal Beach and Waterfront Access Grant for two accesses that have had some trouble with sand overtopping them in the past. And then Hurricane Matthew really buried them quite well. And it was not a FEMA-covered cause because it was no damage to the actual facility. It was simply under earth. So you can't claim damage when there's no damage. It just, it's not really feasible to dig it out anymore. It's not lasting more than a week or two, really, for our buildings and ground people. So we applied for the grants, which are seventy-five, twenty-five grants, with seventy-five being paid for by Division of Coastal Management, twenty-five by the town to reconstruct Ferris and Glenmere. Glenmere is a pretty new access. It was built in two thousand and five. It was part of the Bermuda Bay Site Plan. It was actually built by a private developer, donated, dedicated to the town after the developer built it. That will be raised in general to a height that will not be topped. And there is a small site plan in here that shows you how it will be reconfigured. And then Ferris is a very old grant and it was previously a Division of Coastal Management grant. It was built in nineteen ninety-four. And it will be raised and a dune deck, which was not customary at the time, will also be added. With the pre-application, we got invited to do the full application, which gives us great hope that we may be approved for these accesses. We will be submitting the full application with your approval on August the fourteenth, which is a Monday, I think it might be the next board meeting, to be honest with you. And. It's due by five o'clock on the fourteenth, so I'm a little late, I drove to Lisbon City. And we will get word in October, the funds, October, November, and the funds would be available starting December so we could reconstruct them in the off-season and they would be ready for the summer season next year.
Listen, that's great, very exciting.
Yes.
Thanks for your hard work on that.
We don't have it yet.
No, but even to get to the stage of being able to make the full application, I think that is a good a good sign, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. I guess we would need a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the access plans for the Public Beach Accesses and Waterfront Access Grant Program for Ferris Avenue and Glenmere Avenue.
And can we also add that to author our staff to submit the final application?
Sure.
Okay, to the motion and the second? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please stick up saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Great.
Mayor, excuse the interruption. Before we go to the next item, maybe get a clarification on the appointments. I'm sorry, I had walked over to Meredith and I might have missed something.
Ron was appointed to the full, to the vacant position. We did not take action on an alternate.
Okay, would you like that on the next agenda?
That would be great. I could, it's mine, unless we miss something. Jason is still an alternate and would remain an alternate, but now we will have an additional alternate vacancy.
That's correct.
Okay.
And people that had expressed interest, the board had been copying those. Okay, so we'll just.
Yeah, I think we wanted to have an opportunity to have maybe a conversation for, if that's okay?
No, no, it is, it is okay. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
I I missed that and I wanted to make sure I understood.
Okay, so.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
We'll put the alternate position.
We've got to be on the August agenda.
Perfect, okay, great. And.
We don't have too many applicants for board positions to me on top.
I don't think we have many, but I can't see, I can't see what we what we do have.
They had a quick check for me today and there was like one. And it would be, and it's John Windley and it would be problematic because he's on the planning board.
He could serve on more than one.
He could serve on more than one.
Well.
Even on that board?
That that is my understanding. I don't know any reason that.
There's nothing to prohibit it.
It's two.
Two separate bodies. Certain towns out here also actually have it set up to where the planning board steps in and acts as the board adjustment. But the the exact same board, so.
I think this will give us an opportunity to have some discussion and then we can.
And I I apologize.
That's okay, we actually didn't address it, so you didn't miss anything. Didn't have that part of the conversation.
Okay, that will be on the August fourteenth agenda, thank you.
Perfect, perfect. So we are now on to Commissioner's agenda.
Powerworks were fantastic, Commissioner. So it was really nice to see those again. They even worked out better for us, I think, having it on Friday because of the rain.
We've heard that, we've heard from a lot of people that they, that it worked out good for them having it on Friday and then the next day being Saturday and it's just, it's just better. That's right.
Yeah, I was real happy with that company, first time we've used it.
I I think your chief could probably speak to that, working, you work hand in hand with them. Everything, as far as I know, everything went okay?
Yes, ma'am, certainly did. Company, Power Technica, very professional crew. The night before, we got out there at six PM. Well, we just oversaw, they, we didn't carry out all the racks and everything. That was done at six PM. At four AM, the explosives were delivered to the pier. Everything went all fine. Not, everything went all fine. There was a little bit of a problem with the grand finale. It was a whole rack that during the the whole firing of everything, that went detached from the electrical system. We were not able to fire all of the grand finale. And it just happens just because of all the explosions and everything like that, so that's why later on. And it just happens, just because of all the explosions and everything like that, so, that's why later on, there was some more fireworks, they had to be hand fired. Just a little bit of problem with it.
It's leading to the children, that something happened, and yeah.
Those things happen during the whole event, so. We were sitting back, we were like, man, that finale started out great, but it went off, it stopped too quick, and we came to find out that the electrical system got a little messed up during all the explosions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, yeah, thanks.
Anything else tonight, Mr. Midget?
Nope.
Thank you. Mr. Midget?
I'm just thankful we made it through all the storms today, glad, everybody. Yes, it was a little nutty in this area, anyway, I don't know about y'all, but I know, I had people in the, in the hallway for a while, so I don't know if y'all actually did the getting out of the windows way, but.
We had our eye on the.
Yeah, I'm glad you did.
Just to Chief Harris.
I can say it's the first time in twenty years I actually put people in the hall.
Good planning.
Yeah.
I talked to Ken Wilson, we were talking here before the meeting, I mentioned that we're gonna be going out to the dredge, and I think he said it'd be next week, right?
Really, next week or beyond?
Yeah. Late next week, or some other time, so I'm looking forward to that. Be cool, take the fishing line.
Yeah, that'll be neat, you got your boots ready? Still two boots ready? Do you have anything for us this evening?
I'll let you.
We'll move on to Mayor's agenda, and I have one item this evening, it's in your packet, actually, Ms. Lorna, newest, one of our newest officers, and Laura, sorry, I'm excited you're here. Other than for Naxet Elementary, it's a big loss, but it's, it's the Kedle Hill's, Town of Kedle Hill's greatest game. She is now our community officer, and welcome, you're gonna tell us about National Night Out coming up on August first. Welcome to the team.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that, good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to speak this afternoon. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the National Night Out that we're working on at the police department, it's gonna be August first, first Tuesday in August, from five to eight. And so we've got a lot of stuff planned, it's gonna be in the Lowe's parking lot, and we've had a lot of community partners come together with us to really help us pull this off. Lowe's, obviously with their parking lot, they're gonna help us out with a whole bunch of other stuff. Food Line, Frito Lay, Front Porch Cafe, Harris Teeter, Home Depot, Island Snowball, Kmart, Metro Rentals, Pepsi, Spacewalk of Currituck, Utz, Walmart, and Yogurtlicious. And we've got a couple more that are still coming in, so we're gonna have lots of good food, free food for the public to come out and interact with law enforcement and other community members, to really get, have just a fun time here in Kedle Hill's at night. Some of the things that we're gonna be doing is there's gonna be a smokehouse there, a blood drive going on, a rabies clinic for five dollars rabies shots, lots of the public safety vehicles for the kids to go out there and plunder through and have all that good fun. But one of the, one of the things that I'm super excited about is a dunking booth, and we're gonna have definitely five spots available. For anybody that would like to participate in that, just send me an email, or call the PD, and I can definitely get you a spot, and anybody else that's in the town that wants to do it. I can get you a spot too, so, that's just a little bit about National Night Out, we're just really excited about it.
Thanks for your efforts, and everyone else is into planning it. I think last year, how many of us signed up to be in the dunking booth?
Well, I think it was, if you did it, then.
I signed up, I did, I signed up, and I was spared because of the weather, and I don't want to be spared again because of the weather, because then that was a great disappointment that we didn't get to have the event, but.
Well, I will say, I've talked to Lowe's, and we have a lot of the plan, so this is gonna.
No backing out this year, so. So how many of you are gonna do it if I do it? Is everybody gonna do it?
Yeah. Man, that's put us all in a fire.
Did you say?
Well, either, either reserve five spots, and either you'll do it, or you have to find a replacement, how about that?
There you go.
Okay. Before we leave this agenda item, we do have a proclamation in our packet to declare National Night Out on August first, two thousand and seventeen. And certainly with this, we want to draw attention to getting our residents, visitors, and other town neighbors to come out and join us for this great event. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the proclamation for National Night Out for two thousand and seventeen.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please stand up and say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Alright, we'll move on then to town manager's agenda. Town attorney's agenda.
Yes, Mayor, and Board, first off, hats off, thank you for earlier, and making my Sunday mornings with two small children, and soon to be three more tolerable.
Congratulations.
It starts sooner than it works out, so I'm very happy about that. On a more serious note, I believe Commissioner Roubaix in particular would want me to report back on the moratorium issues, and also some issues with vested rights in, in the way of development approvals, and what somebody, what a citizen can do with their property, once they purchase it. So, I'm gonna break it down as briefly as possible, and I'm gonna itemize it out, so that way you can ask me questions, if you have any. The vested rights issue, it's circumstantial, surely, it's also something that, that, it's, it's an offset of downzoning, and it's something that, again, has to be taken on a case by case basis. What I'll state, though, is just for clarity, the applicant, this, this idea, of course, stemmed from, we started really discussing this idea when it came to the, what have they been calling? The McMansions, the twenty-two bedrooms, the large, single-family dwellings, as our town, not our code, as North Carolina Building Code, still calls them a residential dwelling. I, I've had some back and forth with Ms. Nelson, who was the applicant on that last text amendment, and, you know, one thing that I want to clarify, in case there was any confusion, it is not enough, in the way of vested rights, for some, for an owner to, you know, go out, buy, say, an oceanfront lot, or, or any lot in particular, but just oceanfront for these purposes, and sit on the property for, say, ten years, and then, you know, ten years later, they actually decide to go out, get a site plan developed, and, and come in for approval, and by that point in time, the ordinance has changed, and, but when they bought it ten years ago, those homes could be built, for example. See, that's, no, that, that is not enough to establish vested rights, okay? But at the same time, you don't, it's, it's also not a requirement necessarily, that a permit be, have already been issued, that construction have already been started, for something of that nature. Something that direct, I suppose, in the way of development, something that obvious. So, the courts have essentially come down, and, and, you know, where we're at really is this idea, this, this idea of common law vested rights. So anytime you hear common law, you think of something that's not, not black letter. So in other words, if there's been a shovel put in the ground, naturally, you can't then adopt a ordinance and say, you can't do anything, you can't finish your construction. Just been, been a building permit issued, and it's valid, and, and the project is ongoing, whether the, again, construction is started or not, where the field's been put out there, graded, anything like that. At that point, yes, you've got vested rights, so it's that unclear area, which is where this common law idea of vested rights comes in, and the idea there, there are so many different subsets stemming from that, but i- if there's been some form of, you know, presentation, somebody buys this property, they speak to the town, maybe because they were issued a prior approval under that particular ordinance, for, for a similar building or something on another parcel, and in reliance on those types of prior approvals, they go out, and they do, they, they, you know, get surveys, or they get these expensive engineered site plans. If they make some form of substantial or detrimental reliance, so really, we're talking money here, i- if they make some form of detrimental reliance on the particular plans, again, not whether necessarily whether the permits or construction been issued, the permits been started, if they're making, spending large amounts of money on, on the particular ordinance, because again, they bought it for that investment purpose, then there's definitely an argument, it's not clear cut, but there's certainly an argument of, of vested rights. So, that's, again, very circumstantial, though, I, Meredith and I have had conversations, particularly on the, the many hotels, I hate to call on that, because I'm certainly not, not instituting my personal opinion here, but I'm going with the dialect and the public, and a lot of these projects already have, say, permits issued. So, you know, again, it, it would be a scenario where downzoning, when brought up at last meeting, it was never, nothing was said that, you know, look, we can't do this strictly for downzoning. It was just a scenario where everything, every angle, you know, it's a major decision, we're one of the only positions or locales on this strip of Bay Area Islands where you can actually develop the way that, that these, the, these, these McMansions, again, are developed. So, again, all angles need to be decided, and certainly, certainly not trying to say that that would be something that would prevent. So again, just wanted to clarify that through conversations with the, with the applicant. Now, so far as moratoriums, however, that gets a little bit more, more interesting in particular, as a matter of fact. So, in two thousand and five, this idea of city, cities, municipalities being able to enact temporary moratoriums came up. And at the time, there really, I mean, there, there were restrictions in terms of, you know, the purpose behind it, and what you must, you have to set timelines and things of that nature. But really, the idea was, you can adopt a temporary moratorium on any development that requires approval by the, by the municipality. That was the idea back in two thousand and five. Well, in two thousand and eleven, comes this amendment, new bills passed, as we see all the time, we talk about them all the time, and an amendment to the bills was, came in, and where I'm at is North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter one sixty A, which, which are our enabling statutes, it's what, it's where municipalities were created, and the grants of power given to municipalities. More particularly, Section three eighty-one, if you look down at E, perfect, so we're asked provided the subception, cities may adopt, okay? If you go to the accept clause, however, except for the purpose of developing and adopting new or amended plans or ordinance as to residential uses. So, you know, I've, I've looked through School of Government articles, and what I've tried to do is, is focus in, hone in on the intent here, and, you know, to, to state the, what, what this means, of course, so what that's saying is, a municipality cannot strictly for the purpose of tweaking its ordinance, or developing some new ordinance to perhaps restrict, or even prohibit, a certain type of residential development. That cannot be the reason for issuing a moratorium. Now, in the commercial setting, that's okay, I mean, you, you're not, you don't really have any restriction whatsoever, the hotel height thing came up, and I know Commissioner Midget and I had some back and forth over that. That's a different scenario, we're in, we're in the commercial setting there. So, what I would say, then, would be, i- if there's some type of public consideration, safety, so we've talked about fire suppression systems and the potential need for those, or something of that nature. I mean, that, that's out of our purview, really, but again, you know, in thinking, I, you'd have to define, if you wanted to set a moratorium on the, on the large twenty-two bedroom houses, there would have to be a foundation other than, well, really what we want to do is take into consideration our current land use plan, or our current ordinance, wait to amend those, and then see what happens. But until that time, you can't come forward with an application, is what, you know, essentially the moratorium would be saying to, to the, to the potential applicants. And, you know, I suppose the intent, again, I've tried to think about it, and, and I, I guess, you're dealing with the scenario where it would not, whereas all, all private property rights of any citizens has to be considered in any municipal decision, it's not really fair to put everything on hold, so far as applications for residential uses are concerned, when in fact, what you're really trying to do potentially is, again, prohibit. So you put something on hold, you stop it from occurring under your current ordinance, and then, three or four months later, okay, we've now adopted the ordinance, and since we put you on hold, sorry, but yeah, this is our new ordinance, and you can't, you can't apply. So, it would be very sticky, in, in, in the context of the, of the large homes. But again, if there could be a purpose, which there would have to be, due consideration put into it, but if there could be some form of purpose decided on, that, yes, we'll issue the moratorium for the following reasons, not to include considering the adoption or amendment of our text, of our ordinances, then, then we would, then we'd be okay. But that, that I feel like in this particular scenario is gonna be, gonna be rather tough, I think we've made it kind of clear what, what the motives are, in terms of future consideration by the town, any amendments as to the size of homes. So, that was kind of a, a short research session for me, so I found that sentence, and that, that kind of made my, made my research rather easy. So, that's, but again, commercial purposes, we're under, we're under a whole different set of rules, so, but I think I was, was more specifically geared towards the, the residential home, so, with that being the case, I'll, I'll reserve any other comments, unless you guys want to.
Questions?
Well, rental homes, that's a commercial enterprise, you know?
Unfortunately, no, well, not by the building code, actually, you know, you think about the idea of what, there's other statutes out there, such as, you know, the theory of, you put a home in an LLC, is that LLC then conducting business by being a property holding company, and our law says no. So, no matter which way you spin it, whether you're under the building code, under general statutes, as it relates to corporations and businesses, no, that there's nothing there that, that would state that renting your property is, is conducting business, or conducting commercial activity, better said, in North Carolina. So, right now, we're, we're stuck with, with what it is, it's a residential use, and there's nothing that, that we, that we, as a board, that you, sorry, as a board, as a town, nothing that can be done about that, so.
Questions? Thank you for the research and the information. Answer the question.
Well, and I just want to make one comment, because I think we've looked into this just a little bit, too, people think it's easy to make it commercial, but when you look into that aspect, the, the insurance part of it, the, the financial part of it, for the, for the folks who are owning it, it changes drastically, does it not, zoning wise, et cetera?
Zoning and building code is dramatically different, and we don't have the ability as a town to govern it as commercial, unless the building code designates it commercial. We cannot, even if we want to.
Correct.
Even if we think it's right, so, we can't.
The general idea is no usurping the business code, you can't be more restricted.
Right.
If it's silent, you can maybe tweak and put some, you know, alterations to it, but, but it's not silent whatsoever, so, not a scenario that we could.
But it does change all kinds of other aspects from the construction world, that the town's not specifically involved in, such as insurance and financing and stuff, from the home builders' presentations on it. But I'm not, I'm not privy to any of that information.
But I've had public say to me, well, just make it a commercial zone. It's not that easy.
They need to change the.
Change the oceanfront property to a commercial zone, make, make hotels, to make that, make that a whole residential area a commercial zone, because that's what's there, it, it doesn't make sense. It, it doesn't, because if that's what's gonna be there with the.
But you could, you could still build a residential, of course.
We do a tiered approach to zoning, and our zoning ordinance right now, and the commercial zone is a less restrictive zone than the residential zone, and the ocean impact residential zone, and every use that's allowed in those two zones is allowed in the commercial zone, plus other uses, so you could have real estate buildings, and all kinds of other, or you could have car dealerships, you could have all kinds of things on your oceanfront that may not be of benefit to your town.
Thank you.
The oceanfront impact, the ocean impact residential zone takes into account some commercial development, including hotels, motels, multifamily, which are all under the commercial code. It also allows single-family dwellings, it does have some, is more restrictive because of the environmental aspect, it has less lot coverage than the commercial zone, a little more than the residential zone, but, and this is setbacks are similar to the residential zone for residential development, and they're more similar to the commercial zone for commercial development. So it's, it's a blend of the two zoning districts with emphasis on the environmental impacts.
Yeah, I, I Googled McMansions, just to see what would happen, and we're not the only ones, believe me, it's, it's from California to New York, there's so many cases, I mean, you, you could be looking at them all day long, even in other countries, New Zealand, Australia, they're all, they all have, and they're not all oceanfront, they're different, like, you know, in a community where there's a lack of affordable housing, for instance, and. and, you know, somebody buys an affordable house and puts up a mansion, then it can only be rich people that can buy it or live there, and that was one of the topics in one of the court cases I was looking at. So, we're not the only ones, and it's far from easy. I mean, there's just, there's not an easy way to fix it to makes everybody happy, it's not gonna happen.
Comments or thoughts? Okay, we will move on then to consent agenda.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Have four items on the consent agenda this evening, there's three actually in your packet, and then we had one that came in late this afternoon. First, the minutes from the June twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen. Second is two budget amendment corrections, one is for coding error and the second's for correcting the funds on the original budget amendment. Number three is the spreading and sand fence portion of the beach nourishment. This is simply allowing us a paper trail, but beginning immediately, the local landscaper, Carolina Landscaping, will be installing approximately twenty-nine hundred ten-foot sections of sand fencing within the beach nourishment municipal service district for seventy-three thousand dollars. Once nourishment is complete and the sand fence installed beginning in August, Coastal Transplant will install thirty-three rows of sea oat and beach grass, a total of approximately three thousand, three hundred thousand plants, for a total cost of three hundred and eighty-three thousand. And then the item that is not in your packet, we received a request from the, Blassey's, the owners of twenty-four oh five Bay Drive, this sound property immediately in front of their home across the Bay Drive on the west side. They've requested, and as I'm sure you remember some that we've done in the past, they've requested an easement from the town to install a utility line under Bay Drive for the purpose of lining their boat dock. An approval of the consent agenda will record the board's authorization for Mayor Davies to execute the easement agreement on behalf of the town, and staff would recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Any questions? Thoughts? Motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented with the addition.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please, now saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now back to the second time that's set aside for public comment this evening. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Yes, sir, welcome back.
Look at that guy. Yes ma'am, I heard you bring up about the other guy that came up about the beach rental service, I just wanted to let you know, I've been in this town for over ten years now, running my service, and we pretty much stayed in all the guidelines, the ordinance, we are just looking for permission to sit it on the east side of the dunes, which is pretty much what every visitor down here is doing with their equipment overnight, and our equipment's not stored during the day because we're using it. And that guy that came up before me, I think it was about two years ago, I read his transcripts and he wanted to build structure on the beach, which took camera permits and all that, and we are, it's just a tarp that we're covering our equipment with, and we try to keep it out of sight, out of mind, because there's really no way of locking it up and keeping it safe other than making it invisible, pretty much, not something that people wanna see to attract any attention. And I do have a picture of the way our tarp is set up, if you guys want to look at that. So, so I'm just saying for the last ten years, that we have been operating under the town ordinance at all. It doesn't mean that occasionally they don't wanna give the kid a tip or something like that and it does get through and, you know, that, that one guy, it doesn't wanna walk back to the hotel property. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Okay. Response to public comment, we will certainly take this up at our next meeting, that may have time for the board to look into it. Any other comments? Then a motion to adjourn would be in order. Second. All those in favor, please, now saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks, have a nice evening.
Thanks, everybody.